Coming back out of executive session. And we are still in executive session. And I'm looking for a motion to authorize the city attorney to file legal action against David Thompson and necessary parties to enforce three notices of violation in case number CE17-005, with mailing dates of July 6, 2017, January 20, 2018, and February 1, 2018, and to take any other legal actions necessary to enforce these notices of violation, collect penalties imposed by them, or abate the violations. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
And I can second that.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Before you proceed, I don't know if I heard you incorrectly or not, but I think you said before you read the motion that you were, we were still in executive session.
Well, we haven't, we've come out, oh, we're not, I haven't officially closed the executive session.
Oh, but you'll need to do that before you take a vote on the motion.
Basically, I'm closing.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so there's a motion before us, and we're out of executive session. So, any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
If you will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a WCIA workshop with council. So, Washington City's Insurance Authority, WCIA, do's and don'ts workshop for council, Ann Bennett and the WCIA Executive Director.
Hi there.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for taking time in the agenda tonight for this really important topic. Ann Bennett is the Executive Director of Washington City's Insurance Authority. And Kenmore is a member of this insurance pool, which provides us with our property and liability coverages. Liability is our greatest exposure when you think of risk management, and Ann is here this evening to help you understand how you, as council members, can help us minimize that exposure to the city. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ann now for the rest of the hour.
Well, thank you very much for having me. If you have any questions at all during my presentation, feel free to ask them. I encourage you to, if something is catching, you know, that you're not familiar with, or kind of an interesting topic that you'd like more information on, feel free to ask me a question. As Joanne mentioned, I'm the Executive Director of WCIA. I've been with WCIA for approximately 22 years. And if, for those of you who don't know who we are, we are a self-insured risk pool. So unlike an insurance company that's for profit, we're actually a municipal entity that's created by our member cities. We currently have over 160 municipal entities. So nearby you, you have Lake Forest Park, Bothell, Woodinville, Breyer, can go around Lake Forest Park. So we have you surrounded. And basically, what you're doing is pooling your money together to self-insure your risks with us. We've been around since 1981, and we have over 170 million in assets. And that's because we self-insure the first 4 million every occurrence of loss, which means each member has a lot of control over what occurs with their claims and lawsuits, and our members like it that way. You also get to vote on what coverages you want, what type of various programs we have. So it's a, basically, an insurance company run by the insureds. So at, one thing to think about is Kenmore has been a member of WCIA since you incorporated. And that gives you a longevity, and us, a knowledge of your community over a very long timeframe. We, as Joanne mentioned, we offer you liability coverage. We offer 25 million per occurrence. We also offer property and auto, which is this building, we insure this building. We also purchase cyber liability for all of the members, and we also offer crime coverage as well. But if, along with insurance, our real tenet of risk pooling is risk management. And the idea is, we want to help you prevent the loss from ever occurring in the first place. So most of our programs are really built on prevention. We have assigned risk management reps, reps that are assigned to each member. They come out and do best practice audits. We also have a comprehensive training that, program that your employees go to. We train over 13,000 people every year. One program that we're really interested in right now is a certification for supervisors, where when you have city employees that are promoted to supervisors, they can get a certification that says they've got minimum training with regard to how to be a supervisor and some of the employment law. So we handle your claims, we give you all kinds of risk management, and one of the things that we do is we require every member to do some minimums in terms of training and risk management. And this training actually counts towards Kenmore's qualification of what we call our compact, that the members agree to with regard to being a good risk. When you're pooling money with one another, you want to make sure everybody's practicing the best risk management that they can. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about how you, as city council people, can potentially create liability for your city. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to tell you some of the areas that I've seen claims come out of. I'll tell you a few stories. I apologize if you've heard my stories before. I recognize some of you from the last time I was out. But I always protect the names. I, I don't say which city it was. Feel free to shout it out if you know, but I can tell you, it wasn't Kenmore. So when I do these trainings, sometimes people will say like, "Oh, I think that was us." It's like, no, none of these stories are Kenmore. So the areas where you can get into trouble are land use, personnel, something I call negligent misrepresentation, defamation, as well as public works. And we'll go into that in more detail. So the first thing that you should know is, as a council, when you are legislating, and you are legislating as a body, you receive immunity. It is a very strong immunity. As long as you are in your legislative role and you're acting as a whole, you cannot be sued individually. And this was tested by one of our members, when a developer didn't like a zoning decision that was made. And what the developer did was, he sued each of the individual council people for tortious interference with a business expectancy. Didn't get what he wanted in zoning. And so what he did is, he sued all the individuals. Well, early on in litigation, you basically send letters back and forth, and one of our letters said, you know, "There's this legislative immunity, you can't do this." So the attorney, you know, "Thank you very much, we're going to continue." So then we do, "Well, we're going to bring a motion, and if you don't do it then, we're going to ask for sanctions." Still didn't do it. So we bring our motion, granted, sanctions awarded, and then, believe it or not, they appealed. And the reason they did is, they wanted this hanging over the individuals in hopes they changed their mind. So in his mind, it was more cost-effective to keep this litigation going at the chance that everybody would wear out and just give him his way and cave. So went all the way up, believe it or not, to the Ninth Circuit. And he actually had some alleged civil rights complaints, so we had it in federal court. And it was upheld, and we received over $100,000 in sanctions and attorney's fees. That's how strong your immunity is. And we will go through and fight that fight where we can. And, you know, the, the city council members were all defended, and were aware of exactly what we were doing with that lawsuit. So first, when you're dealing in land use, that's one area where you can get yourselves into trouble, and I'm happy to say, Kenmore probably won't get themselves into trouble because you guys use a hearing examiner. Some cities don't use hearing examiners, and that's where you have that quasi-judicial role where you're hearing appeals, and that can be fraught with liability. So the fact that you have a hearing examiner means that you've removed yourself from the potential of sitting in quasi-judicial decisions and violating a potential appearance of fairness doctrine, or being seen to be arbitrary and capricious as council members. So the hearing examiner does that for you, and the appeals go, for your appeals, they go straight to King County. So I'm not aware of areas where you guys are sitting quasi-judicially. If you are, you know, Rod would tell you, you're in quasi-judicial, and you would have to act as a judge. And so the idea is, you have to be fair and impartial, and you have to have the ability for an un, you can't talk to proponents or opponents either side. So it puts you in a really tricky role, because you want to be able to talk to your constituents. So by transferring that to a hearing examiner, you're in a very good position. But I can tell you, you can still get into trouble. And I will use names here, because these are all published cases. The first case I'm going to talk to you about was actually one of my cases. It was a 15-year litigation. It was Westmark versus the City of Burien. The City of Burien incorporated in '93, and one of the reasons they incorporated is that they wanted to be a single-family home community, not an apartment community. And what was happening is, there were a lot of apartments going up at the time, and there was a very vocal constituency who said, "We don't want apartments." So there was a project that King County had prior to incorporation involving a massive apartment complex that had some steep slope issues with regard to the permit. And so they were waiting to hear from King County. King County issued one determination of significance, and then they were negotiating with the developer. The developer was saying, "Hey, is there a way we can get mitigated?" So while they're in negotiations, this brand-new city, who had almost no staff, decided to take the project over. And what I will tell you is, the project languished a lot over these environmental issues, regarding CIPA issues, but the whole time, the council was saying, "Don't allow this development. We don't want apartments. Do what you can to stop it." So 15 years later, we're still in litigation. About 10 years into it, we actually had a settlement. And we had a settlement where WCIA paid, you know, about $200,000. We understood from the council, they were on board with that settlement, along with some of the development criteria that was negotiated. And so we settled it, the paperwork all went through. About six months later, there were members of the council who said, "Hey, guess what? We're seeing this development going through the pipeline, but we never approved that in open session. That was illegal, and you cannot have a settlement without us having approved that in open session." And they were right. So they went to court to overturn the settlement that we had, the city did, because the council said, "We don't want this." What happens is, it opens up, we go to trial, and a jury awarded $10 million for the delay and for the tortious interference of a business expectancy by that council. And, you know, when you get a $10 million verdict, you usually say, "Well, we're going to have to appeal. We're going to have to appeal. Maybe we, maybe we get a good shot with the Court of Appeals." And I can tell you, and Rod's smiling because he's probably read the Westmark decision, it is brutal. It just says, you know, "This council did everything they could to make sure this apartment complex didn't go through." And they upheld it, and they had some pretty ugly language in it. So we ended up paying, plus attorney's fees, along with the interest, a lot more than $10 million. The next one I want to tell you about is not one of our members, which is Mission Springs versus the City of Spokane. Luckily, Spokane not a member. And I call this the city attorney's favorite case, because what occurred was, there was a major development going in, in town, and it was very controversial, and they had already gone through the process and permits were about to be issued. The mayor decided that he would invite the citizens who were opposed to this project to the council meeting. So he invites them, not the developer. And right in the middle of the meeting says, "I would like an update from my planning director as to what's going on with this development." Planning director gets up and says, "We're issuing grading permits." And if you know what that means, it's a done deal. It's happening. The mayor says, "I order you not to issue those permits." City attorney stands up, "Mr. Mayor, I'm afraid you cannot do that. It is too late. You are violating the law if you don't have those permits issued." Mayor says, "I don't care. I want this project stopped. Do not issue the permits." City attorney again says, "This is against the law." And what happens? The, the planning director's going to listen to his boss. He doesn't issue the grading permits, and the developer goes off to court and sues. What happens is, a decision that says, "Not only do you not have any immunity, you have violated both state and federal law." And there was a verdict, I actually don't remember the amount, it was a large amount of money, and one of the reasons I don't remember is, is there was a lot of litigation over who was going to pay it. And so there were numbers floating around at what ultimately got paid, and what didn't get paid, and how it got negotiated further. But it basically said, "Listen to your city attorney, and when you step outside your role, you were told, this is illegal, and, and you knew it when you went into it, there's no immunity." And there was liability attaching. So the city, I know there was litigation with their insurance carriers, I don't know the ultimate numbers, but we're talking a six-figure type of case here, if not seven. It might have been even up at seven. Lastly, I want to give you a recent case, which was actually a good case, and it involved, it was called Woodsview versus Kitsap County. And this involved a project for, it was a very complex ecological project with regard to mobile homes. And there was a long delay. And normally, you know, when you're dealing with a complicated CIPA, you can have a delay as you're going through that process. In this case, what occurred was, a county councilman wrote an email that said, to a citizen, that said, "Don't worry, we're going to do everything legally possible to stop this project." So when this delay's happening, the developer starts doing public records request, "Ah, Exhibit A. They're delaying because this county commissioner, council member, wanted it done." Well, the good news was that they found, all of the delay was explained by the staff, by the Department of Health, and that there was no communication between this county commissioner, council member, and the staff. So what they said was, the delay was reasonable, and we saw no interference, despite what was written in that email. So what I would say is, but for that email, probably wouldn't have seen a lawsuit, they thought they had the smoking gun. So again, you know, be aware, as things are going through the process, when you jump in and you start interfering, you're opening things up to potential liability. So the next area, yeah?
And I guess it's kind of relevant to all three of these, but I'm specifically thinking of like Westmark. So in, in a case like that, and from the insurance pool, do you adjust the premiums then, that, that Burien pays in something like that, when we're talking such a large amount?
It actually, it, one major loss doesn't affect the premium. So the one thing that you have with pooling is rate stability. So all of the members share in these big losses. So the idea is, this one major loss wouldn't hit Burien that hard. There is a factor for losses in there, a loss experience, but these really big ones get capped at about a million, and then it kind of filters through the rest of the membership. So it's not like they got a double rate.
Okay, so is there, I mean, I would assume there are some cities that are very good and manage their risk well, and there's others that don't. And so are those that don't, are they penalized?
Their rates are higher. If, you know, so there is a, what I would say, there's some loss rating in there. It's not as extreme as an insurance company, where it's, it's a direct. But in terms of, if there are problem members, and things aren't going well, we'll have some discussions with them, work with them. We've gone so far as to put deductibles on some, some members if we need to, if we feel that they're not turning things around. So if you're consistently a bad loss, it's going to reflect. If you have one really big one, it's probably not going to hit you that hard.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. So the next area that you can create liability in is personnel. And what I will say is, you always want to stay in your legislative role. You're setting policies and budget. So there are times when you might be looking at, "Hey, it's a budget decision to eliminate positions." What I will tell you is, you always want to be talking to your executive, even when you're in that legislative role. For example, in 2008, when cities were really strapped and they were looking at layoffs, there, it made sense, well, you're going to think this, we're going to lay off the most highly-paid individuals at the city. So that sounds like a great idea. But think about who the most highly-paid individuals at cities are. Are they usually individuals over 40 years of age? And could all of those layoffs have the effect of having a desperate impact on employees over 40, which is a protected class? That's age discrimination. So it sounded like a great idea, but then you had patterns where you had a disproportionate effect on a protected class. There was also a situation with one of my cities, where there had been a whistleblower complaint by a city attorney regarding a council member. The other council members didn't know anything about it at the time. This city attorney was not well-liked by a lot of the council, and when this particular council member, who she had made the whistleblower complaint, came forward and said, "I'd like to make a motion from the floor to eliminate the in-house city, city attorney position and contract out," they thought, "That's a great idea." And he said, "It's going to be a savings, we're going to do this." Well, guess what? It looked retaliatory for her exercising her whistleblower rights. So the rest of the council, everybody was sued individually, and they were saying, "Well, we didn't know there was a whistleblower complaint." And the question was, "Why did you have a motion just flat from the floor to do this? There was no study. There was nobody showing you the cost-benefit analysis." So it looked retaliatory on its face, because that's exactly the story that was to be woven by the plaintiff. So you always want to, even though you're legislating, be aware of what's out there. What I would say is, you never want to stray into the executive's role. Rob has higher fire authority with regard to his employees. You can talk to him about that, but once you stray into his role, you're getting into a world that is very fraught with all kinds of complication. Employment law changes on a regular basis, and we have a whole program where we have employment lawyers at the ready to help our members through difficult employment scenarios and talking with them. So you want to make sure that you're referring those matters to your executive for him to handle, and you don't want to get in the middle of his world. The other thing is, in this day and age, you want to be aware of harassment and discrimination, not just from your policy and budgeting, but you need to know what the city's policy is, what the expectation is. You are held to that same policy. And so the expectation is, that you're going to treat the employees the way that they are expected to be treated in their workplace. If you're aware of a situation, you need to let Rob know immediately. There is an affirmative duty for the city to act, and there's no such thing as, "I don't want to report." If you see somebody harassing me, you need to tell Rob. And I could tell you, "I don't want you to say anything, I don't want you," no, that's not okay. You need to tell him, so he can start the process of looking into it and correcting whatever behavior there is. If you are aware of other problems, if you hear rumors, any of that, I would encourage you to let Rob know immediately. Because one of the things that I hear often is, "Everybody knew. Everybody knew. Everybody knew." And I'm saying, "Why didn't anybody say something, so that the city, the HR department, that Rob could do something to end it?" And so I would encourage you, if you haven't been through harassment training in a while, it's more than just sexual harassment. We put on those trainings, you're welcome to attend. I'm sure many of you at your employers have been through it. It is unfortunately in the, you know, public right now, but it, it's something that you really want to be aware of, and make sure that you know what the city's policies are.
We hold that training fairly regularly. And Joanne, we just recently had anti-harassment training, what, about a month ago?
That was back in the worst of the training, catch on the entire. Every couple of years, we need to specifically focus on anti-harassment. So, and it's something that we offer on a regular basis. We also will have videos up, so if you want to watch a video, we're just redoing it now, so it'll probably be ready in a month or so. But, you know, it is, it's a topic, and what I would say is, you're, as long as you're treating others as you would like to be treated and respectfully, you're going to be fine. But if you see behavior, you just got to let somebody know. The next area to be aware of is something called negligent misrepresentation. The idea is, if you make a specific assurance or promise to a citizen or, you know, a business owner, and it's incorrect, and they rely on that to their detriment, they can make a claim for negligent misrepresentation. So a good example of that, many years ago, one of our cities has their downtown all clad in cedar shingle, and so it's a really quaint, cute little downtown, and one of the business owners came in one day, and everybody was on vacation. I don't know why there was no city staff there, but the mayor said, "I'm holding the fort down." And helping out, and this business owner said, "Boy, this cedar shingle is killing me. It's so expensive, I'm barely making it. Is there any way you can make an exception for me, because this, my business is going to go under?" Mayor says, "We'll make an exception, you know, you don't have to put up the cedar shingle, all good by me." So what does he do? He tears down the cedar shingle, he starts stuck going, and the business, the, gets, the code, building official comes out, slaps a red tag on it and says, "You got to tear this out, this is in violation, you have to have cedar shingle." So he files a claim, because he was told and given a promise, relied on it to his detriment. So who paid for his stuff to come down? WCIA did, because it was a negligent misrepresentation. So what I would say is, don't be afraid to say, "I don't know." I say, "I don't know a lot." If you don't know the answer, "I don't know." And, but let me find you the person on city staff who can help you. So the key is that you say, "I don't have the answer, but let me check with city staff." And you're, you know, feel free to say, "Hey, you know, is, was that citizen's question answered?" But as far as, you know, you getting involved, if you don't know, you don't know. If you do know, you can answer it, but most of the time, I would refer them to city staff. Defamation is an area that you've probably heard about lately in a few lawsuits in the city of Seattle. What I would say is, when you're legislating, and you're debating, and you're having conversation, and that is the spirit of what you're being asked to do, is to have that debate on issues, on big-picture items. Where you can get into trouble with defamation is individuals. So when you're dealing with individuals, it's a very narrow scope as to what you can say, and any untruth can give rise to liability. There are certain situations when you're talking about a public figure, a public official, where you're probably okay. But if you're on the dais and you're saying something about an individual that is not good and is not true, you could be on, being sued for defamation. So you've seen it with the city of Seattle. You had the mayor making some comments regarding a private suit and a private citizen that filed suit against him, and that was settled for about $150,000 by the city of Seattle. And that was mainly, even though he wasn't commenting on anything of city concern, he was doing it on city time, using city resources, and the city decided that was within the course and scope of his employment. There's another lawsuit currently pending involving a council member of Seattle regarding some statements she made with regard to law enforcement officers. They are suing her for defamation. The Seattle council decided that that was within her course and scope of her duties as a council member. It is going to be individual each time as to what that decision is. So they decided that they would defend her and offer coverage to her for those statements, and they're also suing the city itself. So again, be aware, if you're discussing an individual, it is very tricky, and whether or not you're doing so within the course and scope of your duties of a council member can be questionable. And so Seattle's made those decisions. I know some people have decided or have said, they don't believe that's the case, and they shouldn't be defended. I take no position. It's just, you know, something to think about when you're going into that arena, that that's even up for your fellow council members to decide whether or not that was in the course and scope of your duties as a council member. So public works is an area that I like to talk about, because this is an area where there's a lot of liability for us, and it's really there's a lot of liability for us, and it's really something I call political engineering. There is, in this state, something called joint and several liability. What that means is if a plaintiff is fault-free and there are multiple defendants, as long as there is at least 1% of fault against a defendant, they can collect the entire judgment against that defendant. So where this usually occurs is you have, let's say, a driver of a vehicle with minimum insurance limits. They strike someone in a crosswalk. They have catastrophic injuries and the millions of dollars. They will sue the city, saying it was a poorly-designed crosswalk, hoping that there will be a 1% fault, and they can collect the entire judgment from the city because the at-fault driver doesn't have enough insurance to cover the damages. All of these cases become engineering malpractice cases. And as an aside, juries never know about joint several liability. They are making the decision, and they have portion fault. They don't know who's paying for it. So often, they'll say, "Well, it's just 1%, so you would pay 1% of the $3 million." No, the city would pay the entire $3 million. So for example, we just had a crosswalk case at trial, and we learned later, the jury was at about $4 million and just a very small percentage on the city, and they felt very strongly the driver was at fault, but, you know, the city could have done a little bit better. We had settled it during trial, but it was an eye-opener for us that they were looking at those big dollars. So these are engineering malpractice cases. And when I say that, it's engineer versus engineer. And you want to make sure that you have followed all of the standards, all of the treatments that are required by engineers. When you do political engineering, you get into trouble because you're not following standards. So here's an example for you. You can say, "I want a stop sign at this intersection." We need a stop sign because the public is crying for a stop sign. You put a stop sign. What that can do is if it doesn't meet the warrants, you've just backed up all the traffic flow behind it. You've created more conflicts, and you've created more dangerous situations. So then you get the lawsuit for, you put a stop sign in, and it wasn't engineered, and it wasn't warranted. You also have the problem of, "Why did you put a stop sign here and not here when I got hit over here?" Well, because this community, this portion of the community was louder and wanted it. If you engineer it, you are strictly saying, "It met the warrants. It met the study. This is why we had to do it." You also have to be very careful with crosswalks. Crosswalks are not force fields. And that is something I am amazed. I watch people all the time just, you know, hit the button and fly out. And I personally have handled many a crosswalk litigation and have seen, you know, horrific injuries. And I've seen crosswalks where, you know, it's a blind turn, so someone comes into a blind turn, they're never going to see the pedestrian. That would never meet a warrant, putting a crosswalk there, because you've got a curve, somebody's coming around, and they're going to get hit. So the idea is you engineer it. Is this proper? Is this meeting warrants? When you have a situation happen, oftentimes, people want you to make changes immediately. Stop and study it. Is it warranted? Because the last thing you want is to put in a treatment and later find somebody say, "It was ineffective. It was wrong." And in fact, that case I just mentioned that went to trial, there were non-warranted lights and flashing lights, and people were saying, "Well, that was a distraction." So, you know, the city went in and did some treatments, thinking this would, you know, flashing lights would help, and they actually were used against the city to say, "Well, it wasn't warranted for that." And in fact, it was distracting. So, you know, if any, as we say, you know, any good deed goes unpunished, or no good deed goes unpunished. That's what the lawyers always say. So, yeah.
Does that same engineering analysis go into all of the road speed limit signs as well? And so, and the reason I ask is because I've seen like, I've seen a trend in other municipalities where roads have been reduced in their traffic speed limit, that ones that had traditionally, you know, decades, had been at particular speed, and now they're putting in a lower speed limit. And so if they were designed at an older standard, is, how are they able to do that and function that way? Or are they just accepting the risk?
It's usually traffic calming, and they study the volumes and what effect it would have further down. So they are engineered. And so they'll put in some of those, like, traffic calming measures to slow things down. But if you're creating conflict in other areas, they may rethink that. So usually, all of those are engineered. There's traffic studies to see what the effect would be if you slow that down. A lot of times, and right out here with the state, you're not allowed to do much on speed limits on state highways because they want to control that flow. So it just, it's always engineered when they're looking at any study, whether it's, you know, warrants. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know they do traffic studies and look at what the traffic calming would do and what kind of effect it would have further back, and if it creates any conflict.
Okay. And then just one other question on this. If it's already an existing, say, you believed, whether it was right or not, but you believed it was an engineering flaw in something that was done on a road, but it's been there for 25 years, is the liability the same as if, versus if you had recently installed that engineering flaw?
When you say, "Is the liability the same?", the other side's expert will say, "It's not engineered correctly, no matter when you did it." So if you're aware of a problem and you know it's not properly engineered, they're going to say, you know, "Not only was it not done right in the first place, but you knew it was a problem, and you didn't fix it."
So how does, because every city around us, and I drive a lot in my work, so I know, there are significantly substandard roads and areas that clearly do not meet current standards from an engineering standpoint. Are every one of those a liability risk?
You're not required to upgrade to current standards. So, you know, when you're doing improvements, you have to go with current standards. If you have a situation that is a known dangerous problem, you know, and you also have what gets into what's called discretionary immunity, you only have so much money to fix. So if you might have a big plan of how you're going to fix your roads, but you, there is no duty to upgrade to current standards. So, you know, unless you know of a high accident history because of this engineering problem, you know, I wouldn't say you have a duty to upgrade. But if you're having a high frequency of accidents, and that's when these warrants come into play, is that kind of accident history.
Thank you.
The next area I want to chat with you about is executive session. I'm going to ask you to, first of all, resist the temptation to ever share anything in executive session. It is executive session for a reason. It's so that you can have a frank discussion of potential litigation, your real estate offers that you're looking at, and even personnel. The reason it's there is because you want to enable the city to have a fair discussion of your liability, of your litigation strategies, without it going to the other side. I've had situations where defense letters on some of our cases were given out to the press. There was one situation, this was all on video, where there was an executive session. It was a very controversial land use issue. We assigned a land use attorney to come talk during executive session about the potential liability arising out of decisions that could be made. It was just a general, "Here's the liability that could happen." And there was a memo given to the council during executive session. They came out of executive session, convened an open session, and one of the council members got up and walked over to the developer's attorney and handed him that memo. And I have never seen a city attorney run so fast in my life. They ran over and grabbed that letter and said, "No, no, no. You are not handing out this letter." And so the council member said, "I'm waiving privilege. I can waive privilege. I can give out this letter if I want to." And so this very smart city attorney went to every single council member and said, "Are you waiving privilege? Are you waiving privilege?" And they said, "No, no, 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 no." And I actually disciplined that council member for doing it and said, you know, "This was really bad behavior. What were you doing?" I have had situations where, you know, you haven't been in this here at Kenmore, but we might have some big litigation, and you ask me or one of my staff to come out in executive discussion, executive session and discuss what's going on. I had one where we talked about our strategies, what we were going to do, and then I went to mediation, and everything I told the council was being told to me from the other room. I had a leak. That doesn't help the city if you're leaking that information. It didn't help me because they knew my moves before I was going to make them. If I start getting wind that I have a leak and things are getting out of executive session, I'm not going to update you as a council. And we've done that on a couple of occasions where we've said, "I'm sorry. I won't come out, and I won't tell you what's going on because it's getting to the other side, and I can't take that risk. And I have an obligation to the rest of the membership to make sure I am safeguarding these dollars and not giving you the information that you're going to use against us as a member." So again, you might get the best information out of there. I would resist the temptation to share. It is a very legitimate reason why you're in that executive session. I would ask, I know you've all been through OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act, training. I would be mindful of your written communications. Be mindful of what we call serial emails, where you're coming to consensus on email. There was a case against one of our members. We actually don't cover Open Public Meetings Act violations because they're actually sanctions. And it was a $400,000 award to the plaintiffs when they found serial meetings were taking place on private email discussions about what was going to happen. So you can't do that. The other thing to think about is if you are using personal devices for your city business, that is a very tricky thing to do because it subjects your personal computer and your personal devices to search. And that has come up. I don't know if you followed what's been going on in Pierce County with the prosecutor. He used his personal phone to write some texts back and forth to people, and he said, "Oh, it's my personal phone. You don't get that." And it's been in litigation with hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they've said, "No, you were doing business on your personal, city business on your personal phone." You also want to be aware, if you are using devices during meetings, that is all public information. We had a situation where there was actually a hearing going on. They were sitting quasi-judicially, and somebody was, you know, typing away on the iPad. And so the developer said, "I'm, you know, I'm going to file a public disclosure request for every email sent while you were on the dais while we were inhering our appeal." The problem was, he wasn't writing about anything to do with the city. He was sexting his girlfriend. And it was doing it on the city email issued to him. So the citizens got wind of this, and for the public comment section for several meetings, those were read by the citizens. So don't do it. Resist using any of this city-issued emails for anything personal. It is all public information. And, you know, I carry two phones. I have my personal phone, and I have my work phone, and never the two ever cross. And we, the big thing, too, is making sure that the city can retain your communication. So your email will sit on the city server. When the public records request comes in, it's easily identifiable, and they can find it. So the idea is that you want to do your public business on the public servers and be responsive to any public records requests as they come in. So there was a council member at one of our member cities when the city said, "Look, we need you to turn over your personal computer. We're aware that you're using it for some city business. We need to do a search." And he filed a lawsuit, and he said, "I have a right to privacy. You have no right to search my personal computer, and I'm going to bring a lawsuit to block the city from searching that." And the court said, "You have no right to privacy when you use your personal computer for city business." So that was tested, and he lost. So again, I know, you know, there's all kinds of trainings on what you can do, OPMA, and what your roles are. And I know Rod can answer any questions you ever have about what's public and how you want to make sure your emails are on the city server as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any further questions, but that is my presentation. Yes?
Question on cities that are not part of this group. So you mentioned Spokane, if you want them not. Are there any other large cities that are not part?
Seattle is not part. Vancouver, Washington, so when you get to those really Everett-not, we're mostly medium cities and smaller. So when you get to be a large city, mostly they self-insure a large part of it, and then they go to the traditional insurance market after that. So there are multiple pools in the state. Some have really small cities. Some have, we have most of the medium-sized cities as well.
City manager.
Yeah, back to the email and serial meetings. So often, I send the city council an email, just informational type email. This council's really good at just, if they want to reply to me, they reply to me, and they do not hit the "reply all" button. And so it's something that we try to reinforce is, do not hit the "reply all" button because that could be construed as a meeting and having a conversation, so.
Good reminder.
Yep.
And as I always say, you know, the E in email stands for evidence. It can and will be used against you. So when you are writing things, be aware of what you're writing and how it could be interpreted. Because I, often, when I'm in the middle of litigation, most of the time, people are saying, "That's not what I intended by that email. It's not what it looks like." And again, it's going to be used.
Councilor Shroeben.
So I have a question about the emails that we receive from city manager, city staff. So they are considered public, then?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no restriction on who can see those?
No. Well, I'll defer to Rod because if...
Yeah. There are certain categories of email communication or any communication that are exempt from disclosure under the Public Records Act. Because your new council member will have to go over what those exemptions are.
Yeah. And that's why I defer...
One of them is attorney-client privileged information.
Any other questions? That was really a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very informative.
Thank you.
You know your business.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Oh, that's right, it does. We have to, yeah, recess for 10 minutes. It's published that we started eight, so we can't start before eight, so that's it. If you got them. Now in session. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, seeing as we, we need to remove items, what is that? Is that 15?
15.
Recess to executive session. And then 16, possible action related to executive session.
Okay, so remove items 15 and 16 from the agenda is the, is the change. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we?
Say, unless there's an objection, it stands coming.
We don't need to vote on that, do we, Kelly?
Assume there's no objection.
Pardon, unless there's, yeah, okay, so no objections. The, the meeting, agenda will stand as modified. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, the introduction of our interim police chief, Peter Horvath. Mr. Carlinsey.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Chief Suther is a, has been a contract chief with us, meaning we contract for police services with King County Sheriff. And he has just recently accepted another supervisory role at the city of Shoreline, which also is a contract city with the sheriff. And so in the interim, we have Chief Pete Horvath, who is serving as our interim chief for a few months. And we'll be doing the recruitment for the regular position here pretty soon. But in the meantime, Chief Horvath is serving as our interim chief. Do you want to say a few words?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the council, members of the public, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you just briefly today. I'd like to say that I'm honored to be in this position and honored to be working with you and with City Manager Rob and everybody here at city staff and representing the city. I look forward to the next several months and doing what I can to help everybody. I look forward to the next several months and doing what I can to help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It's nice having you here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for you to express your, your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And will the clerk please call the first person? The clock is running on the screen behind, behind me.
Vicki Grayland. Hi, everyone. Good to be here. I'm here tonight to talk about the Sierra Club Beyond Coal campaign issue.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, sorry. I'm Vicki Grayland. I live in Kenmore. And I've been a Sierra Club Beyond Coal campaign volunteer for six years. And the reason I can keep up with this is because the very first night that I went to the meeting, I found out that we get 30% of our electricity in this area from PSE from a very dirty coal plant in Montana. And I found out that most of the children in that town have asthma. I had asthma when I was in my twenties in Chicago, and I moved out here, and it's much better. But I don't wish that on any other human being, and I don't want to be responsible for anyone else having asthma. And that's what keeps me going on this campaign. So there's a hearing between, in front of the UTC next week concerning PSE's 20-year plan. And the Sierra Club's idea is that we can steer the PSE away from fossil fuels and into renewables, and we can speed up their shutdown of those coal plants in Montana. I sent you all a letter, and I have a hard copy here. The King County Cities Climate Collaboration, including our neighbors in Kirkland, are signing onto this letter, which I have a copy of. And I also invite you to testify at the UTC hearing next week, Renton Community Center, February 21st, from 1:30 to 7:00 p.m. And this is a pivotal time to speak up. Our county executive Dow Constantine is going to be there. And this is a time to make alternative renewable energy the plan for this area. We can do it. The Sierra Club has joined with other environmental groups. And also, right now, PSE is planning to construct a fracked gas plant in Tacoma, producing liquefied natural gas for shipment to China. So at every step, gas is not, they frame it as a clean energy, but it isn't. Through, from extraction and transportation, processing and transportation, again, liquid natural gas leaks methane. Methane is a much worse gas for global warming than carbon dioxide. So we really need to stop that, and the Puyallup Tribe is leading the campaign against that. And I also encourage the city to consider joining the King County Cities Climate Collaboration because together we can do a lot more than individually as cities. Would you like me to drop off this hard copy?
You certainly can if you want to, if you want to give it to the clerk. I did see that email this morning.
Okay.
And I did read it.
Thank you.
David Lane.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name's David Lane. I live at 1582761st Lane, here to address the ballfields up at the lodge at St. Edwards. First off, I want to say thank you for your ongoing efforts in terms of keeping this moving forward. I wanted to come and, and stand in front of particularly the new council members to make sure that you were aware of all the history, and I think you probably are, otherwise you wouldn't be sitting there. But the, the, the long history, I think the last real win we had about ballfields for our kids here in Kenmore was when Dr. Church said, "Hey, it's not really Bastier's responsibility to have ballfields. But since St. Edwards shut you down last time," and this was, what, nine, 10 years ago, "we'll build ballfields at Bastier." He did the right thing. And the kids have been playing, playing ball there. The city was behind that at the time, and this has been a long effort with the state park around making this effort happen. It's great to see that Daniels is behind, behind the ballfields. I think that there's been enough time. Unfortunately, the costs have tripled, or at least. But I want to encourage you to keep the path, you know, continue to support it. Rob, thanks for driving it from a city management perspective. What else? This is my notes, just a short conversation. Oh, the other, other item that came out just in the paper today, and in an infrastructure plan to be revealed by the federal government. They're going to push more costs down to the state in terms of funding parks. You know, it starts with surface transportation. So the infrastructure plan, you've got surface transportation all the way down, public parks and recreation is third from the bottom in terms of what's been funded. So the federal government infrastructure plan is going to push more of the costs. It used to be 80/20. They say, "We're going to reverse that and make it 20/80 in terms of the state assuming responsibility of the costs of these parks." So where's, where's that going to come from? I think the city has budgeted for this, and we're not going to get help from the state, state parks to do this. We're not going to get help from the federal government. So if we can support it here at the city, as you are, I encourage you to keep the path. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Phyllis Finley.
Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. This is a comment regarding the follow-up email I received from Debbie Bent in response to my remarks made at the January 29 council meeting, in which I requested that the city of Kenmore partner with the school district in applying for a grant to upgrade the school fields. I appreciated very much Debbie Bent's email and the follow-up. It's obvious from Ms. Bent's reply that the grant application process is complex, and to quote Ms. Bent, "takes a lot of time." We can substitute the word "dollars" for her word "time." While I appreciate the city's awareness of fiscal responsibility, I can't quite square its words with its actions. The city has already spent approximately $400,000 pushing for the sports complex at St. Edwards. Another million dollars will be needed every 10 years to replace the proposed artificial turf there. Money was spent to pass an illegal paw ordinance, with more money spent to attempt to defend it with the Growth Management Act. The city manager alluded at the January council meeting that answering every single comment as part of the SEPA process was extraordinarily time-consuming. The city chose to spend how much? To fund a nocturnal study, to refute the results of the first one? And it goes on and on and on. So while applying for a grant may well be complex and time-consuming, it can't be any more complex and time-consuming than the process involved in turning the St. Edwards ballfield into an artificially-turfed, chain-link-fenced, stadium-lighted, wetland-destroying, parking-deficient, user-limited sports, sports complex. As a city, the emphasis should be on using limited resources for the highest benefit to the greatest number of its citizens. We're all for ballfields. Improving school fields has the potential to benefit every single child in Kenmore, not just the small demographic of primarily, but not exclusively, young white boys who have the opportunity and privilege to join a sports team. When government and other, other public entities work together to avoid duplication of services and to achieve the highest benefit for the greatest number of their citizens, the result is fiscal responsibility and the more efficient use of limited resources. There are ample references in city documents supporting and encouraging cooperative agreements between cities and the school district. A relevant example, City of Kenmore Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan adopted November 25th, 2013. Section 4, page 5, partially says, "City boundaries are not necessarily recognized by those residents participating in various forms of recreation. Developing new and enhancing existing partnerships should be continued. Coordinating planning efforts in the mutual use and development of park and recreation facilities should continue. The grant applications and questions must be filed by the city in which the school property is located." In other words, the city must be the applicant and establish cooperation with the school district. The city needs to take the initiative. I continue to request that you do just that. I request that your priorities be aligned with fiscal responsibility and the opportunities to provide ballfields to the greatest number of Kenmore residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Finley and Ms. Grayland for your comments. And Mr. Lane, thank you. Ms. Grayland, you had another email this morning saying that Deborah and Joe do not have valid city email addresses. Are you getting email at your city address?
Yeah, the issue was the website.
Okay.
And that's been corrected.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that, that you had city emails, because it was suggested that you didn't. So thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second, is any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item, business agenda. Walkways and waterways park projects update for Log Boom Park. Ms. Bent? And Ms. Colozizi.
So while Kelly is just setting up the PowerPoint presentation, I'll give a quick introduction. So we're here tonight to give you an update on the walkways and waterways project at Log Boom Park. As you know, there were three park projects in the bond measure. We had an early win with the Rodeo Endrum Park project. Tonight, we're talking about Log Boom, and we'll be back in March to talk with you and give you an update on the Squires Landing project. So you know, Log Boom Park is a very popular park in Kenmore on, on Lake Washington. And since the park master plan was approved in 2006, there have been many really great improvements at that park, a new playground, a restroom, a walkway, landscaping. But the part in the master plan which wasn't done was the waterfront improvements. And we heard loud and clear from the community that access to water was really important. And that's why that item was included on the bond measure. So tonight, we're going to kind of give you an update as what's happened since the bond measure, what have we been working on, what refinements have been made to that conceptual plan. So we have a little PowerPoint presentation for you, which Maureen will go through. It's probably about 15 minutes. We're happy to answer questions as we go through, unless you want to hold those questions to the end. So I'm going to turn this over to Maureen. Thank you.
Like that? Okay, thank you. Good evening. Debbie did a great job of introducing the importance of water access to, and in terms of log boom, there's one... Much better? I think I can hear. So Debbie set the stage for how important public access to the waterfront is in front of Kenmore. And there's no other place like Log Boom Park to do that. The goals of this project include improving access to the water, improving circulation within the park, providing hand-carry launching for kayaks and stand-up paddleboards, and enhancing ecological value. The concept plan shown here was developed to schematically show the location of proposed improvements and were expressed during, that were expressed during the public involvement process leading to the Walkways and Waterways Project Bond Measure. These improvements include the beach expansion. I'll kind of give you a little overview. You all probably know this very intimately. New trail and viewpoints, so that's kind of in this area. Picnic areas and a picnic pavilion here. And water access for kayak stand-up paddleboards, including a structure for rental and storage. And that is right in this area. Following the bond measure, the city began working to analyze the site conditions to help inform the best locations for these site features, given new information. A log boom and a permanent float were not originally included in the Walkways and Waterways Valid Measure Concept Plan or Budget, but including them was explored during the analysis phase of the project. In early 2017, wetland delineation and topographic and bathymetric survey was performed. Bathometry relates to the, what the, the ground looks like underneath the water, in case that's something that is a new term for you. Staff and our consultant team, Matt McDonald, went and met with agencies, regulatory agencies, the Army Corps, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Ecology, the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, and King County. Based on feedback described in this slide here, the consultant team conducted additional environmental and design analysis to revive, to refine the concept plan and answered questions from the regulators. Some of the things that they wanted us to really take a look at was avoiding impacts by changing the beach geometry, reducing impacts to the shoreline. When we spoke with King County, they really wanted us to keep our improvements within our own property, if possible. The stability of the beach, use science to figure out whether the beach would be able to be sustainable, that means not be lost to wave action. And we were exploring the debris broom with them at the time, and they said there needs to be a clear purpose and need for that. So we went forward and began some analysis work, which included coastal engineering assessments, wetland delineation, and site survey. All of this helped to relocate features to avoid wetland impacts. Everything okay there? The, the bathometry and waterfront conditions and the wind and wave analysis helped to confirm that the beach is at the right location and could be built so that it's sustainable. A follow-up meeting was held in December of 2017 with the Washington Fish and Wildlife and the Muckleshoot Tribe to review those analyses with them to determine whether we've prepared enough information that would hold up in the permitting process. This really led to the refinements for the 30% design. The feasibility of a log boom and converting the seasonal float off the pier to a permanent facility were explored, but found infeasible to include due to cost and environmental concerns raised during the regulatory agency review. The current location is great for a seasonal float, but they had concerns with it being converted to a, a permanent float in that location because of the location along the shoreline is where a lot of fish have access. And we're still exploring the right water depths for providing a permanent float. And in terms of the log boom, the log boom wasn't providing, and it was, the main concerns we heard from the agencies with regards to the log boom was, in terms of our analysis, it wasn't providing enough debris collection to not have debris being on the beach, so that wasn't a clear purpose. And the other reason was for wave attenuation, that it wasn't going to provide enough wave attenuation in that area for the beach to be fully useful. There were also concerns about navigable waters, providing enough access for boat... There were also concerns about navigable waters, providing enough access for boaters, and then also providing limitations for fish, the tribe's rights to fish that area of the lake. Is there anything else, Debbie? So again, all of this really led us to making refinements to the design. So what I'd like to do now is kind of lead you through some of those changes. So again, this site plan will continue to evolve. We're at the 30% stage. This is what the refinements that we know to date, given the information that we have. We'll continue to explore refinements as we move forward in further design, and we'll be coming back to you this fall or winter to share with you the 60% design development phase. However, we're pretty confident where these elements are, that we have a buildable project. It's just that, you know, we might be tweaking the design some. So the 30% refinements have been made from the concept plan, and I will lead you through those changes from east to west through the park. So down in this area here by the pier, the 30% site plan provides for environmental enhancements, plantings, within the wetlands near the pier and along the waterfront. Any unmet mitigation for wetland impacts will be met offsite at the Squires Landing Park As we move a little bit further along in this whole linear process here is our circulation pattern. The main difference between the concept plan and this plan is we're proposing to have one main promenade through the park instead of diverting off of the existing path. This would create a wider path with more curvilinear, and having it be more curvilinear creates more of a park-like feel, but it still allows and accommodates bikes, but slows them for the expected increased pedestrian traffic that we'll be experiencing with this new project. Viewpoints were reduced from three in the old plan to one. And the temporary storage and water access used by the Inglemore High School rowing program can still be accommodated within this current plan. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that in the concept plan, just above the beach within the King County property, there was an overlooked seating area proposed. When we presented this to King County, their concerns were that they didn't want to have that in the sewer easement, and that's the exact area we originally had on the concept plan. So we've removed that, considering you can't really provide that kind of overlooked view area within our property area. Now for some of the main elements of the park project. Focus on the beach first. The beach design has three distinct areas. Above the ordinary high water is an upland sandy beach. That's kind of denoted in... It's hard to see maybe on this overhead, but on your view, it looks kind of tan-colored or yellowish. That area is above ordinary high water, and it provides for more recreation use of the beach. I don't know what to do here, Kelly. Just clicking that? Okay, thanks. That's better, thanks. Then the second area is a transitional area. It is going to be gravel. It's kind of between the beach, upland beach area, and above the ordinary high water line. This transitional gravel area is intended to deal with wave action as it comes on the beach and to assure that if we had sand in this location, we would likely lose a lot of that to the wave action. So by having it in a gravel transition, you're guaranteeing that over time, the beach will continue to be there, will lose less material. And then, once you hit the ordinary high water line, we begin our in-water work. And what we're planning to do here is place on top of the existing grade what they call fish-friendly gravel. That gravel is appropriate for fish and wildlife in the water. It's similar in size and material to our existing gravel, so on the beach, so there's not... Won't be a whole lot of change there. But the significant thing to remember here is that we're not doing any dredging. The existing upland wetland beach area, excuse me, upland beach area is approximately 30 lineal feet, and I'll kind of try to outline that. It really is a small area on this site plan. It kind of comes up into the park that way. So we're proposing to expand that about five times larger, up to 160 lineal feet. The picnic areas, there are proposed several picnic tables along the main promenade through the park, and also a picnic pavilion, which we're calling a pavilion. It'll be very similar to the picnic shelters that we have at Morelands or Rhododendron Park, as an example. The pavilion was moved further east, closer to the main sandy beach area, hoping that we'll be able to provide more access to the beach for users and also to make it a little less carry distance from the parking lot. Okay, for watercraft water access. The rental building and the water access was moved further west, so just kind of was a little bit back here before. And the reason why we moved it a little further west was to pull it out from behind this existing wetland. The building is approximately 1,000 square feet and is intended to accommodate concessions for kayaks and stand-up paddleboard storage and rental. This will kind of lead you through all the main elements, and I'll move on to schedule unless I've missed anything. Did I miss anything? Schedule. Well, we're set to have a public open house on March 22nd. The land use and environmental permits we're hoping to submit in spring or early summer of this year. The staff will be also developing grant applications for the Recreation Conservation Office. That process starts in February and will submit the actual permit... Excuse me, will submit the grant applications in May, but likely won't hear about funding until October or November of 2018. The 60% design phase will begin after we submit the land use and environmental permits, and we'll be coming back to the council probably in the fall or winter to be able to give you an update of how things are progressing. Construction is still anticipated to be complete in 2023, with design permitting and bidding continuing from now until then. Okay, the updated total project cost estimate, including an estimate for what we may need to provide for monitoring and maintenance of the environmental mitigation areas for the project, is slightly over budget by $140,000. However, the total design permitting, construction, and cost estimate, not including that monitoring and maintenance funding for the future, is within our current budget. And like I said, we'll be continuing to look at costs as we move forward in the further design phases. Approximately $40,000 a year will be set aside for approximately 10 years, and this is required by the permitting agency so that whatever we do to offset impacts to wetlands or to wetland buffers would be accommodated. A good thing for Log Boom that I may have missed earlier is that we're not directly impacting any of the wetlands on site with this current configuration. In terms of other funding, we're going to still go after two RCO grants for potentially up to $1 million. However, it's probably more practical to expect that we receive one grant for about a half a million. And that completes my presentation.
If I could just add one more thing on the expenditures. We're being pretty conservative. If you look at the inflation contingency and the construction contingency, that's almost $700,000 right there, just to be safe on expenditures. So like I said, we're taking a conservative approach.
Thank you for adding that, Rob.
Dr. Curtis?
So just a general comment. I actually like this plan better than the initial one. I think it groups functions together. It's less choppy. So instead of having all these little paths down and having the wetlands divided up into little bits, it just feels like the wetlands are a nice group, and the sandy beach is a nice area, and the picnic area. So it just... It feels nicely laid out, and I think it's going to add a lot of function to this park.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Maureen, for your presentation. I have a question. On the existing pier that's there now, is there going to be any repair work included in this renovation that will replace the deteriorated wood railings and the wood cleats?
It's a separate project, so it's not part of this capital project, but there is a separate project that we're undergoing right now to replace that railing. In fact, I think it's in permitting right now.
Okay, thanks. And then the other question I had is, on the agenda, on page two, and this is under beach expansion number one, under design refinements. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly because it says the existing upland beach area is about 30 by 60, so 1,800 square feet. Then it says the revised one is 4,800, and then it says approximately 60% larger. And if it's going from 1,600 to 4,800, that's like two and a half times bigger. I'm just trying to understand, am I missing something there?
I may have done my math wrong, but...
Because it's basically is a pretty significant difference, and I just... I'm hoping it's more than just 60% larger, and that's...
Well, that's why we tried to provide this in the presentation today. I received some feedback from the other council members that this is better described in lineal feet, and that basically 30 lineal feet, which is approximately right here, and I did this calculation, it should be accurate that that is approximately... That the rest of the lineal footage of the beach is approximately five times larger. So I hope that explains it better for you. And that it is 4,800 square feet total, but what you're not seeing is that the existing beach is partly covered up by improvements on this plan. So you're not actually physically seeing that as part of the concept.
Okay. I just... When I said it, it said approximately 60% larger. That didn't make sense relative to those numbers. That's... I'm just trying to understand what... If I'm missing something there.
So the numbers are what they are. The percentage might be wrong. So the existing beach out there right now is 1,800. What's proposed is 4,800, and whatever the math is, is the math.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Sorry.
On the pavilion, who is going to manage it?
On the picnic pavilion or the rental structure?
Who's going to book it? Who... So we don't get three or four families fighting for it on a particular day?
Rob's raising his hand before I jump in. I'll let Rob jump in.
No, you probably have a better answer than I do.
Well, I would imagine that we'd have to have some sort of... It would be very popular, I imagine. So the question is if we think it's going to be popular, then the city would have to decide if we want to be the ones managing the rental of that facility or not, or we just leave it first come, first served. So it's sort of an administrative or policy decision that the city will have to make.
I guess where I was going with that is the seniors. They're doing a pretty good job of managing the picnic pavilion.
I see.
Over there, that might be good for them to be able to manage that one.
And we also have a new picnic shelter at Morelands as well.
Pardon?
We have a new shelter at Morelands Park as well.
They would be good at that also.
Maybe. There you go.
And we'll be reviewing one again at Squires Landing. So there'll be more that we're adding to the system, so it'll be something that we will need to address.
Just a suggestion, I know that's your ballpark.
Oh, no, it's actually a policy decision for you to make, yep.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob, do you want to let them know?
Your Honor, I just wanted to thank Debbie and Maureen for their awesome work, and Maureen is all over this project. She's a true professional. She's got tons of experience, and we're lucky to have her. So thanks, Maureen.
And we'll be back in March, March 19th, to speak to you about Squires Landing before the public meeting on the 22nd, so I look forward to seeing you soon.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Next item, staff reports. St. Edward's Ball Field's update. Ms. Bent?
I don't really have a lot to say, other than I think in your agenda packet, I attached what was in your retreat packet, which gave a pretty good summary of the status. And the only thing I can give you as an update since this went out is that I resubmitted a response to comments on Friday. So that's, I guess, the new news for you. So right now, that information has been submitted to Development Services, and I guess the next step would be for Development Services review team and state park staff to see if they have any questions or comments on the material that was submitted. That's all I have to say.
All right. Councilmember Marshall?
Could you reiterate your response to...
Could you reiterate your response to Ms. Finley on the school grants?
We don't... Sorry. There is no public interaction at this point. That was during council comments.
Oh, yeah. No, I was just asking you about it, about your response regarding school grants for the ball fields. That's what I meant.
Well, I think Ms. Finley had asked if the city could apply for an RCO grant to upgrade the school field. And I think my response back was basically saying that in order to do so, first of all, we'd need to get permission from the school district to file that. We'd need to identify a project to do that. We'd need to have sort of a preliminary design and finance and who is going to do what, the cost sharing and everything, and we don't have that. It's not that it's a good idea to do that, but whether that would be feasible to do for this round of RCO grant applications, I'm not so sure it's feasible. I'm not saying it's a... I think it's... That's what I was trying to indicate to Ms. Finley, is that it does take time to be prepared to submit a grant application, and I'm not sure if we're actually prepared to do so this year.
Well, plus, we'd need a shift in direction from you. And so it wouldn't be... Obviously, it could be begun, or it could be something that could be explored.
I think that would be sort of, as Rob said, it has to be sort of direction from the council to do so.
Okay, thanks.
I think it would be nearly impossible for us to... Like, if you told us tonight, apply for a ball field grant for a school, I think it would be nearly impossible for us to do that in time for the current grant cycle, wouldn't it?
Right. We have to have that in by May, and in order to have that in by May, for example, as we're applying for an RCO grant for Log Boom, we already know what the project is, we already know what the design is, what the cost is. We are not that... We don't have that level of material for improving a school field, and we certainly don't have any commitment from the school district for such a project.
Right. Assume... Oh, go ahead.
Do we have it worked out yet with schools? I know at Morelands where we enhanced the ball field there, a mother can't walk her baby during the daytime, and dad and his kid can't go on and play frisbee during the daytime because the school prohibits anybody on that playground. Has that been rectified yet?
It is a public park, so it should be open to the public. The question then is sort of the practice of the school district, if a visitor is in the park during school hours. They usually do go and talk to the person in the park. So whether that's fully been outlined about the... I don't think it has. So we have sort of two conflicting ideas from what is expected as a city park and what the school district expects when school is in use during park hours.
Because I know we can't pull in the parking lot to that park and eat our lunch without the school throwing us off the property.
Right.
Anything else?
Yes.
Certainly. Councilmember Marshall?
So I would move that we begin exploration as appropriate of the parameters of at least a school grant, given that the need for baseball fields has been testified to be very important repeatedly in front of us, and that the need as our population increases is not going to go away. I wouldn't view this as a change in direction, but rather a dual-tracking situation in which one process is being pursued at St. Edward's and more opportunities for partnering with our schools, for getting together with the North Shore School District, and trying to revitalize... revitalize those neglected old ball fields in our school districts be explored. And perhaps we can do it, and obviously, we can't make it for this round, but I don't see the need as going away, and it could be a great way to try and get the resources together. So maybe it'd be a motion to engage in whatever preliminary analysis, very preliminary analysis, is necessary to begin that ball rolling.
Okay, so do you want to state that as a motion, please?
I move that we direct the city managers, city manager to direct staff as appropriate to begin exploration of pursuing the school grants in terms of ball fields at the North Shore Public Schools property.
Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion fails.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you.
I mean, yes, anything else?
Just a couple of things. City Hall's going to be closed on Monday in observance of President's Day, and the very next day is the Mary's Place Open House and dedication. So I think all of you know about that. Just want to double-check on Tuesday night of next week. And then last but not least, our new latest edition of the newsletters can be hitting mailboxes any day now. So that's all I have.
Comments, councilmember comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah. I didn't second the motion, but I second the sentiment that Joe expressed. And I hope that we do, over the next year or so, explore with the school district if there are fields that are not at capacity. I think this is how the language is in our retreat minutes as well. If there are ball fields that are not at capacity, whether improvements to those fields in which we might partner with the district could increase capacity, could increase utilization.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Marshall.
Well, the, I attended the meeting of the North Shore Parks and Recreation Services area, and I was pleased to see that there was a resounding approval for the last meeting presided over by our own Brent Smith, in which he had presided over an admirable run for the service area. So he did a great job, and everybody there acknowledged it. He did Kenmore proud. It's going to be, the helm is now going to be taken over by the eminent James McNeil of Bothell. And there is, there was a definite sense of exploring new directions for the senior center and, in particular, the service area, which is its own municipal entity and has its own bonding capability and power. And there was indeed some interest, although there were some more caution about it as well, but there was some interest in exploring possibilities of a public pool. So I was pleased to see that.
Councilmember Smith.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And a couple of notes on that. So for those that don't know, Joe will be representing the city of Kenmore, and I'll be the alternate. And the NPRSA, you know, they serve as the, you know, facilitating the bonding payments of the senior center, and that bond is paid off in, I believe, 2021. And so at that time, there will be, I think it's fair to say, there will be some capital needs associated with the improvements at the senior center and at the day center across the street. But that's just something to keep in mind, just kind of as I'm tailing out on my end, that's, I think, will get a little of attention going forward. And then also, I would also like to thank you for your comments on the partnership with the school district. Because I think there's no doubt that there's a different leadership and a different mentality than we've had in years past. And I can see that there will be opportunities going forward, and I'm hopeful of that. I think one of the things that makes St. Edward a little bit unique is the fact it is at risk of not being usable. And I think we've gone down a long path of trying to preserve this field as a capacity issue, whereas if something doesn't get done, we're at risk of losing it at the level that it had historically been used. And that was basically, it isn't even a safe field now for the sports leagues to use. And so we have also committed funds in our CIP and our Parks Improvement Plan. And so I would love to see us look at that in the future. I would just, I would hope we maintain the priority of seeing this project through down the course we've gone down. And I await to hear how things go at the city staff level with the responses and the Development Services results. That's it.
All right. I went to ETP on Friday, and one of the big things they were discussing was pay for parking at the Park and Rides. That you've got a spot, if you pay, you've got a spot guaranteed until, what was it, 7:30? 8 o'clock in the morning? After that, it's a free-for-all. Anybody gets there can get the spot. They're looking at ways to increase revenue and assure people that there will be a space for them to park. It's still in the concept stage, but it's coming. I was down in Olympia and testified on an issue that Nigel brought up, let me know about, was the raise in the population limits for us to take over responsibility of the highway. So did that move?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was to raise from 25,000 to 35,000 before you took over full responsibility for the highway and no money to do it with. So looking forward, there was two bills that I testified, one on the House and one on the Senate. So we'll have to check and see if any one of them moved because the cutoff is Wednesday. So the other thing is, somewhere, maybe, there was a Timelapse video done during the construction for the city hall. I think council asked that it be done when this was under construction, and hopefully it could have been put together as a nice piece to run at our 20th anniversary. I don't know what's happened to that video. I don't think it exists anymore. But it would be, I understand there was a camera up on top of city hall that recorded the hangar, which would really be nice to be able to play at the 20th. And thinking ahead for the 25th, it might be nice to put another camera up on city hall and record the last construction phase of Main Street properties so that we can have a little record of all of the changes that have happened here in downtown. Certainly like to see that done. And if there's no objection, we can see if we've got that video and put it together for our 20th celebration and make sure we have something for the 25th. So, bring no objection. Yes. Oh, I did, didn't I? I'm sorry, Nigel. No, you get the last word tonight. Wrap up. Now you get the last word tonight because I didn't call on you. I didn't need to call on you. So anyway, Deputy Mayor.
Nothing really to add. I just wanted to say that Councilmember Shrubnik and Councilmember Smith kind of said what I was going to say in reference to Councilmember Marshall's motion earlier. I think that, especially with the change at North Shore School District, that is something that we need to be exploring in the long term. But this week, I didn't think that, I wasn't willing to quite make the motion to second at this point. But I do think long-term, it is a discussion we need to have, and I think we will have as we kind of scoot forward with the overall capacity issues. So I appreciate the spirit of it, and I think that the time will come for that in the next, sooner than you think probably, to have those talks. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
You know, on that same note, you know, I can see that also, but I want to see the public to be able to use the facilities and not be chased off the schoolyards. So when we can get that worked out, I mean, that might be another way to approach it. But anyway, if there's no further business to come in front of us, we're adjourned.